Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to our July 11th, 2023 City Council meeting. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the City Council, and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Councils during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. Whomever I can hear, would you mute yourself? That would be great. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. It's a finding in the city of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. I'd like to begin by introducing the City Councilors on the call. First of all, I'm Val Gilman, Ward four City Council Councillor and Council President. Jason Grow at large, Scott Memard, Ward one City Councillor, Sean Nolan, Ward five City Councillor and Council Vice President, Tony Gross at large Councillor, Jamie O'Hara at large Councillor, Jeff Worthley at large Councillor, Tracy O'Neil is Ward two City Councillor, and Council Marjoto will be here in five minutes. I'd also like to mention members of City staff that are here. Of course, Joanne Sinos is our wonderful City Clerk, and she's back from two weeks of a very desert vacation. And today was a little crazy, we know, but we're still glad that you're back. And we have Kenny Costa, who is our auditor. We have John Dunn, who's our CFO. And let me just see who is... Any other attendees that I need to mention?
Pam Toby.
Pam Toby, who is our Director of Communications and Constituent Services, Kathy Clancy, who is the Chair of the Gloucester School Committee, Barbara Bryan, who is the Traffic Commission Chair. And I think that is it right now. So, having said that, right now we have 15 attendees, already people raising their hands. So next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order is oral communications.
The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the Office of the Mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. So tonight, if our... We have Jason Grow, who will be doing the timing. And if you would, at 2:50, say time, and then we ask any members of the public if you could wind down in that last 10 seconds, that would be great. But we are going to keep public comments to three minutes. And we ask that you do state your name and address, and we're ready for that. So Council Grow, if you're ready to time. Madam Clerk, if you could bring in the first person with your hand raised, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Just Lynn Maguire.
That's you. Okay. Hi Lynn, if you'd introduce yourself and your address, we're eager to hear from you.
My daughter just is Lynn Maguire. I am Joan Comiskey. I live on Rust Island, 39 ye Old County Road. And I would very much like to make sure that we have year-round water, because otherwise we're in danger of severe fire. And I'm 91 and not very mobile, so that it really worries me. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. And it's so... I'm so glad that you're on our call tonight, so appreciate it. Next person?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. My name is Joanne Borselli, and I live at 7 North Landing Way on Rust Island. My parents purchased the house in 1982, and I assumed ownership in 2019. First, I want to thank the Mayor for his commitment, that I've heard about now, to replacing seasonal water with year-round water. Like Joan and several others who have spoken in other meetings, I've been very worried about fire safety, definitely underscored by last summer's drought, as I watched the helicopters across the river dumping water. In the July 5th letter that the Mayor provided to my neighbor, Kevin O'Malley, he assured us that Rust Island's at the top of the list for seasonal water line work, which we really do appreciate. In that letter, the Mayor referred to a strategic plan for water infrastructure. So I'd like to just publicly ask that the Mayor's office provide a copy of this plan, along with some kind of more details around timeline. We know that there are a lot of infrastructure needs across the city, and we would love to better understand where the seasonal water work fits within the larger priority list. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you, Joanne. Next speaker? Name and address?
Hello, this is Charles Crowley. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Charlie.
Yeah, hi, this is Charlie Crowley, 19 Biskey Head Point. I just wanted to follow up. I had asked some questions of the Mayor just a few weeks ago about how they would handle a fire in my particular end of this Biskey Head Rust Island area. As I live right next door to Heron Way Marina, a marina with 50 boats, good-sized boats, probably about 10,000 gallons of fuel. The response was that they would hook up a four pump chain, and they would run over 3,000 feet of hose. That's... Sounds pretty much impossible. Basically, the fire in a marina would be gone by then. But so, I wanted to ask, like to ask for a specific request here. Right now, we have a fire. There's a line in our street going from Grand Banks all the way down to the Marina Head. That line, we understand to still be in good shape. About five years ago, snowplows took down the fire hydrant that was up at the Grand Banks end of the street. If that fire hydrant were replaced, we would have in-line in the ground, like a standpipe to fight a fire. The fire trucks would hook up at their hose and do their chain up to the Grand Banks section where they would hook in. We would cut off roughly half of the amount of effort and time that would take to fight a fire. When a fire hydrant is taken out on the street, the DPW routinely replaces them. In this case, they didn't replace them and have left us woefully and, you know, incapable to fight a fire. By not replacing that hydrant, they have doubled the distance and time that it would take to fight a fire. So I would like to ask that the DPW, that the Mayor instructs the DPW to immediately replace that fire hydrant. And it shouldn't be like a yesterday thing, it should be like, or a week or a month from now, it should be like tomorrow. If a fire... If a car took out a fire hydrant in another neighborhood, you'd fix it. So let's get that done. Additionally, I'd like to ask what the role of the police boat, police fire boat would be in a fire at Heron Way Marina. It's always been my understanding that the fire boat would be the first to be called. It would fight a fire at the marina with a... With their two-inch hose. That they would additionally call in Beverly. Beverly has a large fire boat an hour away, but it would come and it would do that. Now, the chief did not mention any of that in his report, but that's how they've always said they would fight a fire at the marina. My concern is specific, that the bridge that...
I'm...
From the bridges, okay? And when the bridges are shut...
Charlie, you have 10 seconds to wrap up.
When the bridges are shut, there's no way to get the truck, the fire apparatus here. I'm wondering why, when we shut the bridges, we don't station some kind of a saltwater pump on this side so we can fight a fire, or a fireboat, something? Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry to take up so much time.
Thank you, Charlie. It's always good to hear from you. And I'd like to introduce Frank Marjoto, who is now on our call, and he is our Ward three City Councillor. Anyone else like to speak to the council for matters not on the agenda for up to three minutes? Any hands? Seeing none, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
Councilors, before we... I asked to pull any matters off the consent agenda. I would just like to amend the consent agenda to add the approval of our meeting minutes of today, July 11th for BNF, which was held at 3:30. And that matter was not reasonably anticipated by us, and we just wanted to make sure that you were aware that we would like to approve those minutes tonight. And our BNF Chair will explain them in detail, and you see that they're very short, but it was for a reason. So adding that to our list of things that we need to approve under minutes. Would anyone like to remove any matter off the consent agenda? Council Worthley?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to remove Council Orders 43 and 44, 2023-43 and 44.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to remove anything on that consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Council Worthley, and then seconded by Council Memard. Roll call vote. Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Marjoto?
Yes.
Councillor Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan? Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman?
Yes.
Council Gross?
Yes.
The unanimous consent agenda is approved, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now the floor is yours, Council Worthley, on 2023-043 and 2023-044.
Thank you very much. So on 43, I got a call today that helped me understand something differently. I want to still include businesses and municipal uses. So I think 43, I'd like to just withdraw completely. And then regarding 44, it was City Clerk Joanne Sinos who said that we would need to also waive notification for every resident, every parcel that is within 400 feet of a municipal lot, so I'm not sure.
Okay, so why don't we start with 043? And would you like to move that you... Or would you like to withdraw it without...
Prejudice, yes, please.
Okay. So I don't think that we have to vote that, because Council Worthley was the generator. So that is all withdrawn. And the next matter is City Council 2023-044. And Madam Clerk, would you just read that, so the public is aware of what we're removing right now? And then Council Worthley can state what he wishes to state? Would you like me to do that, Joanne?
I have it. I have it here. So it's to amend Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 4, General Regulation, Regulation, Section 4.1, Off-Street Parking, Section 4.1.2. The following minimum number of parking spaces must be provided except as exempted above, and except that the zoning board appeals may issue a special permit for a lesser number upon demonstration by the applicant, and that such lesser number will serve the...
Smartphone connected.
...of these provisions regarding increased number, minimum number of parking spaces from one and to one and one and a half in the CB, VB, R5, or CCD district.
Disconnected. Smartphone connected.
Sorry about that. My husband's work station was not completely disassembled today before he left, so... So Council Worthley, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So late this afternoon, I heard from City Clerk Joanne Sinos, and if she'd like to... She would like to elaborate on this, I'd welcome it. But I think at this point, we also have to put in the order that we'll be waiving notification to every parcel that this could impact. Is that correct, Miss Sinos?
Well, yes. If you were going to waive notice to a butters, the notice to a butters would be for, let's say, any butters that would be affected, okay? And any other that would be from a list that the assessors would provide to us. And that the... It would be mailed to owners of property, including in and abutting the area of the city to be affected by such amendment. And that list would come from the assessor's office. So I don't know if we'll be within the 400 feet that you suggested, but this is in the zoning ordinance under that section. And if you didn't want to notice all of the butters, because at this time, we don't know how many there are and the cost to the city, you would waive, make a motion to waive the butters and set the public hearing, and refer this matter to the Planning Board and PND.
Would the waiving decision be at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
So would you like to make that motion?
Can I have a question? I'll wait till the motion.
Well, let's make the motion first. Go ahead, Council Worthley.
I move that we waive notification, considering how the large number of parcels this could impact.
Could you read the full motion?
Sorry. Oh, so the order with the... Is that what you're asking? Read the order with the "and leave"?
Joanne, do you want to make the motion, and Council Worthley will move it?
Okay, let me just find it. Sorry, I'm working off my phone because I would have to do this. Okay, so you would have to move to waive the notice to a butters under Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 111-4B, regarding City Council Order 2023-044, set the public hearing date for September 12th, 2023, and to refer the matter to the Planning and Development Committee and the Planning Board.
And I so move? Can I just do that?
Discussion, go ahead, I'm sorry.
If I may. So I think that we should let everybody possible know about this. I'm not someone who thinks we should ever do any public business in the darker night, right? But for every parcel that's within 400 feet of a municipal lot, that's... I don't know, it's 500 lots, it may be more than that. And there's a cost, and maybe there's ways, either through social media, through public notification, that we can let people know. But to invest the money, I think, you know, we have this debate, we've had it before, on the floodplain ordinance, maybe about a year ago, not quite a year ago. So it was recommended to me by Miss Sinos that we do waive that, at least because we don't know how many parcels it is at this point.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Council Worthley. Any further discussion, councilors on the motion? Council Grow?
I have a couple of questions. My understanding, if I... And I may be misreading this, that 4.1.2 doesn't specifically relate to only within 400 feet of a municipal parking lot, but it applies to any buildings in those various districts, including Lanesville and any other VB district, and the entirety of Ward five, of R5 zoning in Ward two and three. So that, we're talking about the entirety of those districts, correct? So you'd be looking at notification, you want to waive notification to Lanesville, to any other VB sections, plus all of the downtown Ward two and Ward three zoning R5, is that correct?
Well, I mean, I would love for everyone to be notified. I can't imagine this council would want to spend the money to do that. We didn't notify the thousands of parcels that were affected by the floodplain ordinance. So that was what was recommended to me. I'm all for more notification, and if we can quantify that and put a budget number on it, we can discuss it. But the recommendation was that we obviously do notify people as much as we can, but not a direct mailing to everybody.
But I just want to clarify that we're not talking about just within 400 feet of municipal parking lots, because that's not the way the ordinance reads that I can see. We'd have to...
He's withdrawn that one, Council Grow. The one that he's talking about is the one with the...
4.1.2, I can read. It's...
I thought you said municipal parking lots, I'm sorry.
No, he said that within 400 feet of municipal parking lots, but we were talking about changing the zoning for all of CB, all of VB, all of R5, and all of CCD.
We're not talking about it, because we're not deliberating on something that's not before us, right?
That's the intent of the ordinance, is what you put forward, is what we're talking about.
The intent of the motion on the table is to waive notification, and then the main motion is to refer to planning development in the Planning Board, so we can have this discussion.
Okay.
If it turns out that there's reason... If there's reason to do a lesser area, you can certainly make an amendment, it's going to go to your committee, right? So the question really is, how many lots are within four... How many parcels? Because I'm only looking at Section A of 4.1.2, but again, we shouldn't be deliberating on something that calls for us for the first time.
I'm not deliberating, I'm trying to get some clarification. 4.1.2A does not refer to 400 feet within any municipal parking lots. It is intended to cover all of central business, all of village business, all of R5, and all of CCD. That's the question. You mentioned 400 feet, and that's why I'm getting confused. Is the intent of your motion to do it only within 400 feet of the general zoning districts next to the parking lots, or the entirety of those listed in zoning ordinance?
Thank you for your question. I'm sorry that I didn't understand how you confused, and it makes sense to me now. Or how I confuse you. I'm only looking at within 400 feet of municipal parking lots. And I just withdrew the other part, because it also includes commercial use and municipal use. We would never say you can't use City Hall, for example, because there's no parking, because there's parking right next to it by ordinance. So I'm not sure if we need to keep the last one on the dox. I wrote this based on the idea of, without getting into deliberation, that the rest of the city's zoning calls for one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit.
Council, we are starting to deliberate. So I think right now, we should stick with what's in front of us. And we're asking that the motion is to waive the notice of a butters under GZO, Section 1.1, 1.4B, regarding City Council 2023-044. Okay, and in doing that, we need to set the public hearing date for date to be specific, and to refer the matter to the Planning and Development Committee and Planning Board. So that's what's on the floor right now. So we need to decide if we want to move on that. Okay, any further discussion on this wave to notice? Council Gross?
I guess I'm completely confused, because I don't see any 400 feet in that motion.
So Joanne, why don't you explain what you're talking about? It's the boundary of what these parcels are right now. Joanne, could you re-explain that?
The boundary is the zoning areas, is all I can see. There is no 400 feet, which is in the one that Counselor Worthley withdrew, 043, correct, was withdrawn?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That was my point.
Thank you.
Can I see, there's an attendee with their hand up, and I don't know if that's Suzanne Aiken or not. If it's... I'm not sure, though. Usually Suzanne signs in, but...
It disappears.
All right. I guess not. Okay. All right, so yeah.
Joanne, my understanding was that when you discussed this with Suzanne,
Yes.
she told you that it would mean that you'd have to notice the people that live in that zoning area, as well as the additional butters that are at least 200 feet away? Is that the number? Was it 400 feet? What is the number?
These zoning ordinance does not say how many feet it is, okay? So what the zoning ordinance says in 111-4A, notice of the time and place of public hearing shall be given as provided in Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5. In addition, the council shall give notice by mail to the owners of all property, including in and abutting the area of the city to be affected by such amendment, said owners being those persons against whom real estate taxes are currently assessed as certified by the assessor's office. So there is no be involved, it's just whatever the assessors certify on that list.
Okay, is everyone clear on that? Council Worthley?
Thank you. In the interest of time, is there a way to have this come back before the council in two weeks so we can figure out what each of these means, and then refer, if it makes sense to do it then?
I would suggest that you withdraw it and then put it back on, if there's more information that you want to find out.
Can I... I got a quick question.
I don't want to get into a long conversation about this right now, because we're really...
The only issue we're talking about right now is whether to waive notice or not.
Exactly.
I think if you had the vote right now, you would get a unanimous agreement that we should go ahead and waive notice. We can hash out the details of the actual proposed ordinance change at PND and Planning Board. All we're dealing with right now is whether to waive notice. And I think based on the flooding, flood zone amendments we did, there's good reason to do that. And we should just go ahead and vote for that, and move this into the process of discussion at PND and Planning Board.
Are you okay with that, Council Worthley?
Definitely, thank you.
Okay, so Joanne, would the date be September 12th, or what would the date be? You are aware of when Planning Board will be meeting. You said it was like August 17th, or...
Yeah, Planning Board gave me an estimated date of when they'd be able to take up this matter, and that would be August 17. And after that, we do not have a Planning and Development meeting until September 6. So we would have to wait for the recommendation of the Planning Board of August 17. So that's why the next City Council meeting would be September 12. And usually, it's required within 65 days of the Planning Board receiving this order to have a public hearing and the City Council. So that's why I came up with September 12th, because PND will not be meeting after August 17th until September 6.
So it's 65 days from the point where you have introduced us to the City Council, which is right now on the 11th. So 65 days sends you out past September 12th, but that, we don't have a meeting between September 12th and that day, right, in September? So we're gonna... So the date specific is September 12th, the purpose of the motion?
Before the 65th day.
That's correct. Okay, is everybody clear on that? Okay, so why don't we try the motion one more time, so we're absolutely clear on what that is? Joanne, would you just read that one more time?
Four.
And then Council Worthley can move it again. I just want to be clear.
Move to waive the notice to a butters under Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 111-B4, regarding City Council Order 2023-004, 044, set the public hearing date for September 12th, 2023, and to refer the matter to the Planning Board, to the Planning and Development Committee and the Planning Board.
Council Worthley, you going to move that?
I so move.
Seconded.
I'm seconded by Council Memard. Further discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Marjoto?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman?
Yes.
Council Gross?
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
This old business, it's a correction of a scrivviness error in the June 22nd, 2023 budget and...
This old business, it's a correction of a scrivener's error in the June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three budget and finance minutes.
Point of order, real quickly, do we need, I'm sorry, I'll wait for you to potentially call on me.
Okay, um Council Worthley, state your point.
Thank you. We amended that to waive notice, but did we not need to make a vote to send it to?
Put it back on committee. Yeah, that's true.
Thanks. So put it either back on the consent agenda or just vote it separately to send to the planning development committee and the planning board?
Um, I think I think it was all included because we we also said to refer the matter to the Planning Development Committee and Planning Board. So we we made the referral in our vote. So I I believe that we are fine with that. I don't think we have to go and revote it.
Okay, I thought we just voted amendment on it, but if that's how you.
It included the referral. That's why we added the same things that if it had remained on the consent agenda. So I think we're we're cool.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Um, Council O'Neill?
Excuse me, um, Joanne, jump, I think, did you skip the approval of the minutes?
That's on the consent agenda.
We already approved them.
Okay, never mind.
Nine in favor, zero opposed. Okay, so now we're at the old business. The move to correct a scrivener's error on page one, agenda item two of the June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three B and F meeting minutes by deleting three hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-six cents and inserting six hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-six cents.
So moved, seconded.
Moved by Council Memard, I think, and seconded by Council Grow. Discussion, councilors? Um, seeing none, a roll call vote, Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The Budget and Finance Standing Committee report of July sixth.
Great. And um councilors, um, we are going to work off the July sixth, two thousand and twenty-three um B and F draft minutes. And we are going to do the traditional votes. There are four votes that came out of that meeting. And then there is one vote that came out of this afternoon's meeting. And I'm going to ask Council Memard to um to use those minutes. So we are disregarding our template right now because we want to be absolutely accurate. And um and so we're using the minutes from July sixth. So members of the public, if you want to join us, you can look in the documents. It's on um under City Council um under all documents and you can see the minutes, the draft minutes from July um six. And that's what we're working off of. So um Council Memard, take it away. Each one.
Thank you very much, Council, Council President Gilman, and I will try and do just that. So um the first item from Budget and Finance uh was a memorandum from our grants administrator, Jamie Corliss, uh regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, community block grant and H O M E home allocations. And uh after a discussion and introduction about this program, which is a repeat of prior years, uh the committee voted uh on a vote by myself, seconded by Council Gross, two in favor, zero opposed, and one absent to recommend the city council accept a domestic law forty-four fifty-three A, federal grants in the amount of seven hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars for the Community Development Block Grant, CBBG, from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, for the program year twenty twenty-three, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, and the home, H O M E, grant from the North Shore Home Consortium for program year twenty twenty-three, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, in the additional amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, one hundred, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars, and I shall move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Gross. Is there a narrative, Council Memard?
Uh, again, Jamie was uh did an excellent summary of this program, which is a large, largely a template uh ru- repeat of prior years in terms of what we receive and how we use it uh through the Community Development Department.
Okay, um, any um further discussion, councilors? Seeing none, a roll call vote, Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business.
Second item out of Budget and Finance from last week was a memorandum from our Director of Elder Services, Elise Sinagra, requesting our acceptance of donations in the total amount of nine hundred and sixty dollars. And a motion by myself, seconded by Council Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, uh zero opposed, and Council Worthley absent to recommend that the city council accept various cash donations under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A to support the council on aging in the amount of nine hundred and sixty dollars. The following members and business partners of our community, including Stephen and Susan Neme. Uh Clifford Adams, Annette Kennedy, Jerry Favolaro, Marilyn Grant, Andrea Mackey, Velma Higgins, and a squam association, Marilyn Grant, and again Jerry Favolaro, in the total net amount of nine hundred and sixty dollars, and I shall move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Gross. Is there further discussion, Council Memard?
No, just grateful gratitude. All these folks will be getting their thank you letters.
Thank you. Any further discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Council Memard?
Item number three on our Budget and Finance agenda is memorandum from the Veteran Services Director requesting our acceptance donation in the net amount of two thousand and ninety dollars. Now, a motion by myself, seconded by Council Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one, Council Worthley absent, to recommend that the city council accept various cash donations under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A to support the veteran services in the amount of two thousand and ninety dollars from the various members and business partners within our community, including Lee Swetla, Ed Camo, Catherine and Robert Hall, Hall, uh Claire Donald, Patty C V, C A V, Ed Camo again, Christine Rasmussen, Trinity Congregational Church, U C C Gloucester, Wayne Sargent and Therese March, Merchant, Nancy and Joe Virgilio, Ed Camo, Edward, Martha, excuse me, Maria and Sal Scola, Greg and Kelly Verga, Priscilla and Brian Olson, David and Nancy Rose, and Gloria Stevens, again, a total amount of two thousand and ninety dollars, and I shall move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Gross. Any further discussion, Council Memard?
No.
Seeing none, further discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Council Memard?
Yes, th- this this next item and then the one from this afternoon's meeting both relate to year-end accounting adjustments that are necessary to uh bring the year-end uh uh fiscal situation to a close. Involves a number of transfers. They're fairly routine at this point. And uh I'll summarize the discussion. Our CFO, John Dunn, explained that the purpose of these transfers is to make whole the fiscal year twenty twenty-three account deficits. And the two labor contracts, GPW and Patrolmen, have also been settled. So reserve funding that had been put in place to cover the entire year of retroactive pay. Excuse me. As well as one week of split payroll that will be posted on either July seventh or July tenth, twenty twenty-three. And for comparison, the auditor Kenny Costa uh has highlighted the fiscal year twenty twenty-two had a one point six million dollar uh year-end adjustment budget transfer, including a free cash appropriation of four hundred and sixty, four hundred and eighty-six thousand for snow and ice. Our CFO also highlighted the city does not know the exact funding needed for the school choice as attendance has not yet been established and will not be until October. And the auditor um asked that the special education costs also uh not immediately determined, which is why some of these year-end transfers are needed. Uh, on a motion by myself, seconded by Council Gross, Budget and Finance voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council approve the following special budgetary transfer, twenty twenty-three S B T twenty-four, for the purpose of funding and making whole fiscal year twenty twenty-three account deficits totaling one million sixty-six thousand dollars in the following accounts. I'm not going to list them. They're scheduled. There are some thirty accounts totaling as described, one million sixty-six thousand dollars, and I shall move.
Second.
Motion was made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Gross. Is there a further narrative, uh councilors?
Again, this is a fairly ru- routine uh year-end balancing of the books, uh trying to make adjustments where there are uh unspent funds, uncommitted funds in certain budgets within the within the city's departments that are then used to uh balance other the other accounts that are are uh in uh in excess. And this is something that we do every year. This year is quite a bit less than it has been in the past, which is a reflection of our our astute accounting and auditing by the city administration auditor and CFO. So thank you.
And and before we um we vote this, councilors, just just to remind you that both John Dunn, our CFO, and Kenny Costa, our auditor, are on the calls if anybody has any questions on this matter. Council Gross?
I just want to point out what Council Worthley pointed out at the B and F meeting, that this is a point seven six of of one percent. So this isn't even one percent of the budget that needed to be adjusted um to close out the book so that we are um keep our um rating with the bond people and also um keep winning awards for excellence.
Thank you. Any further discussion, councilors? Uh, Council O'Neill and then Council Worthley?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I have this right. Um, LTD is long-term debt, right? So.
That's correct.
Long-term debt interest, the very first thing is twenty-five thousand dollars. That's interest on long-term debt?
Yes.
Okay, and so there's another long-term debt interest for ten thousand and another long-term debt interest for sixty-five thousand. So I, you know, that's a hundred thousand dollars of interest that we're paying on long-term debt. Okay.
Yes.
And do I have it correct that the long-term debt interest is coming out of the city council professional account? Is that right?
Uh, I I, you know, John Dunn can describe the process uh himself, but basically we did not commit. We did not enter into a contract for the expenditure of the thirty thousand dollars that we had in the city council's budget uh before the year end. And so that was uh available for the treasurer to use toward this other balance.
Okay, so that I'm correct in in the way I'm reading it then?
Yes.
Okay, so the ten thousand dollars in long-term debt interest came out of concom salaries. Is that right? I just want to make sure I have it exactly right.
John, would you like to speak to that?
Just say yes or no would be sufficient. All right, that's it. All right, thank you. I just want to make sure I was reading it right.
Okay.
Scott.
Um, I think Council Worthley had his hand raised as well.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Council Gross, for reminding me, I forgot I said to the committee that this is a very, very small percentage of the overall budget. And I think that it's tempting to say, well, we just found money and there's this money falling from the skies. How can we not have this and that? But the reality is, we're talking about a very large organization making guesses about the weather and overtime and people coming and going over twelve-month period and to only be on any budget, to only be three quarters of one percent off in either direction, I think is remarkable. And I I'd like to thank the administration and our city auditor and John Dunn and everybody, all the department heads who came together to say, here's money that we found that was unspent to cover the things that we didn't have enough for. We can't tell in on July first, how much is going to snow out, right? We can't tell how many lifeguards are going to come or not come. How many people are going to leave mid-cycle? And and so there's so many things that change as we go. To only be less than one percent off, I think we should be very proud of that. So I support the motions. I support the effort and thank you, the administration, for working with us on this.
Thank you. Further discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Is there a motion to reconsider, Council Memard?
Yeah, for the purposes of expediency in closing our budget, I would like to request a uh, I would like to propose a uh motion for reconsideration.
Second.
Seconded by Council Worthley. Is everyone clear? Um, so um on the motion to reconsider, Council Grow?
No.
Council Majota?
No.
Council Memard?
Somebody's saying something, but no.
Council Nolan?
No.
Council O'Hara?
No.
Council O'Neill?
No.
Council Worthley?
No.
Council Gilman, no. Council Gross?
No.
Motion to reconsider fails. Zero in favor, nine opposed. Next order of business, uh Council Memard. And I just want to mention to members of the public right now, this meeting was this afternoon. And if you look on our website right now, you will see the draft minutes of the meeting that occurred this afternoon. So it's right there right now. We're being transparent. The meeting was short only a couple hours ago, but all the data from the meeting is there and um and we did approve the minutes. So just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. I'm looking at it right now, right off the website. So.
Following up on Council President's uh Gilman's comments, this meeting was anti- was reasonably anticipated at our Budget and Finance Committee meeting, but not uh not certain. So we did reserve a date for this based on the advice of uh CFO, John Dunn, and our auditor Kenny Costa. The problem in particular that we were facing this year or that they were dealing with was that uh our year end on June thirtieth uh bridged two payrolls and there was a lot of overtime involved at this time of the year uh within the city, particularly around the Fiesta. And uh overtime payrolls for police, for GPW, for the Harbor Masters Office. And so uh they were concerned that in fact, and they did split the payrolls uh between two different uh time periods. So we have a a couple of sort of detailed uh cleanup motions that were reviewed tonight for this afternoon. Uh, John Dunn explained that these were the final fiscal year twenty twenty-three year-end budget transfers. And they are for the purpose of funding and making whole the fiscal year twenty twenty-three account deficits. And these total an additional twenty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. And a motion by myself, seconded by Council Worthley, Budget and Finance voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve the following special budgetary transfer, S uh twenty twenty-three S B T twenty-five. And this is for the purpose of funding and making whole fiscal year twenty twenty-three account deficits totaling twenty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars from the following named accounts as described below, and uh I would so so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there further discussion, Council Memard?
O- only that as Councilor uh O'Neill can see, we again were able to take some funding from our long-term debt service and apply it to facility salaries, assessors' salaries, uh police parking salaries and uh short-term debt in the water uh department. Or, yeah.
Thank you. Um, further discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Is there a motion to reconsider? Council Memard?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Council Member, seconded by Council Worthley. Roll call vote. Council Grow?
Nope.
Council Majota?
No.
Council Memard?
Dog and I both say no.
Council Nolan?
No.
Council O'Hara?
No.
Council O'Neil?
No.
Council Worthley?
No.
Council Gilman?
No.
Council Gross?
No.
The motion to reconsider fails, zero in favor, nine opposed. Awesome. John Dunn and Kenny Costa, in your teams, thank you. And it's a big deal to close our books, and you did a great job. So, thank you. And I also want to notice that our general counsel is on the call, Suzanne Egan, and also our superintendent, Ben Lummis. So, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The ordinance and administration did not meet on July 3rd. So, the next item is Special Ordinance and Administration of July 10th Committee Report.
Council Nolan? You are muted.
We had no meeting, nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Planning Development Standing Committee did not meet on July 5th. So, the first scheduled public hearing is Public Hearing 2023-035 to Manglosa Code of Orders, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-265, Turning Movements Generally, By Adding West Street at Its Intersection with Eastern Avenue Traffic, Shall Use the Dedicated Turning Lanes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before I open the public hearing, I just wanted to remind the public and the councilors that this public hearing is for the sole purpose to amend our GCO to create designated turning lanes as the traffic exits Webster Street onto Eastern Avenue. The hearing is not about the school location. So, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask for Superintendent Lummis to tell us about this request. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam President. So, just want to describe this quickly. This is a recommendation that has been before a number of different bodies for going back to February 2020. It's in the City Council, School Committee, the Building Committee, the Traffic Commission. And it's one very specific recommendation, which will help cars, family cars, move away from the school and the neighborhood more efficiently and more safely. And what it is, is at the bottom of Webster Street, where Webster joins Eastern Avenue, where cars are turning left or right onto Eastern Avenue, the street there is wide enough to create two dedicated turning lanes, one for right-hand turn, one for left-hand turn. Because the street is wide enough, we would expect cars to do that anyway. You know, cars who are turning left, and then cars, you know, would squeeze by on the right if there weren't dedicated turning lanes. So, we want to make sure that it's striped properly to make it safer and clearer to, you know, car drivers and also pedestrians, and what's happening at intersection. So, and so, in order to sign it properly, you need an ordinance change. And again, it's one of the recommendations that have been brought forth a number of times. And thank you to the ONA Subcommittee yesterday, they approved unanimously. And it's one of the, and we expect at this point that the school will be opening on time. We expect a certificate of occupancy, temporary certificate of occupancy shortly. And we're on budget, we're under budget on schedule. And this is just, you know, one other piece to wrap up, which will help us make sure we have a workable arrival dismissal plan.
Thank you, Superintendent. Anyone else like to speak in favor? I see Kathy Clancy with her hand raised, the School Committee Chair.
Mary Ann Boucher was first, but I'm not sure if she's going to...
Okay, so it doesn't matter. We can speak however we want. We're flexible right now. So, Mary Ann, you want to come in and you have three minutes?
Mary Ann, for some reason, is not on the call anymore, so I am going to...
She's back. Okay, so I'm going, if you could keep the timing, that would be great. And at 2 minutes and 50 seconds, let us know. Mary Ann, if you would introduce yourself to us and your address, and you have up to three minutes to talk to us on this matter.
Thank you, Mary Ann Alba Boucher, 93 Mount Pleasant Avenue. First of all, safety is of the utmost importance to me. In favor or opposed to this, but I do want to say that last night's ONA General Counsel Agenda proposed Section 22 Amendment to the GCO, Chapter 22-265, Turning Movements Generally, left no information for the general public to understand what that was about. So, I went to the packet to find what this was in reference to. And what I found in the packet included the proposal from Suzanne Egan to the mayor to create designated turning on Webster and Eastern Avenue. Then I noticed that the City Council's agenda for this evening... Mary Ann, you're fading out. You're fading in and out.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, we can. Thank you.
So, I'd like to back up if I could have a few more seconds added. I don't know where you stopped hearing me, but I found in the packet, which included the proposal from Suzanne Egan to the mayor to create designated turning on Webster and Eastern Avenue. Then I noticed the City Council's agenda for this evening had this as a public hearing. Public hearings, I was surprised to see it on a public hearing because all the meetings I've ever been to, they would have referred it out for two weeks, and an advertisement would have gone out in the newspaper to give the proper amount of time to the butters. I went to the Gloucester Daily Times, and I found on June 30th that this advertisement was placed in the newspaper. I find that the rule of procedure for this is completely backwards. Is there a reason why this was not done in order of the way that I've participated in meetings for the last, what, seven years? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Kathy Clancy, your hand is raised. Introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes to talk to the council. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Kathy Clancy, 78 High Poples Road. I am obviously speaking in favor of this. This is part of an overall approach to make this new school very successful and as efficient and safe as possible for cars and pedestrians. This is one of those things where the turn lanes would help alleviate any bottleneck on Webster Street as best as they can, and I think that's a concern from neighbors. I think if there's a bottleneck, people might be more inclined to try to go through some of the neighborhood streets that are narrow, and we would like people to drop their kids or pick up their kids and, you know, not be part of the congestion in that neighborhood. And this is one of the pieces to the puzzle of trying to make this school as successful as possible and as good a neighbor as... Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it. Next person I'd like to speak in favor or opposition, Denise Pascucci. Denise, would you introduce yourself, and you have three minutes to chat with us?
Hi, Denise Pascucci, 20 Birch Grove Heights. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Awesome. Thank you. Same as Mary Ann, I'm not opposed or I'm not far against. I want to know, has there been an updated traffic report that justifies this traffic change? I don't see it anywhere, or I don't know where to find it. So, is it possible to get an updated traffic report that you're getting all this information, that this two lanes on Webster Street is definitely going to make a difference? Because I did attend the last Traffic Commission meeting where they said they didn't want to make any changes to one ways right now because they have no idea what the issue is going to be once that school is built. So, that my big issue is here, is you're making changes without really knowing that actually something's going to happen there. So, I want to know, is there an updated traffic report, and can we get a hold of it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor or opposition? Seeing none, are there any correspondences, Madam Clerk?
Yes, there is. There was an email communication today at 1:49 PM from Robert Ryan, 3 Blake Court, to all the councilors and the mayor and myself. And he does not support this, and he listed in his email his reasons for not supporting this order, this public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilors, this is our opportunity to ask questions, and we have our School Committee Chair on the call, as well as our superintendent. So, Council Nolan and then Council Gross.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question of Joanne Cinos, if she could explain the advertisement and how the public hearing worked, and why we're here, and what happened last night.
Okay. So, according to the city charter, public hearings for code of ordinances are, he advertised at least seven days in advance of a public hearing. This public hearing was advertised on June 30th. Past practice with the council, and it's been done with different matters, was that the code of ordinances, if it's time-sensitive, the City Council President has the right to order a public hearing before the committee votes on the matter. And so, that's what happened here. So, the code of ordinances are published at least seven days in advance of the public hearing. Zoning and special council permits are published at least 14 days in advance of the public hearing, per the Mass General Law. Loan orders, seven to 10 days in advance of the public hearing. And it's been past practice with the approval of the council president, which he has a right to do, to advertise for public hearing for a matter that is time-sensitive for this Standing Committee votes on this matter, and this is what happened in this instance.
Thank you, Joanne.
Questions? Council Gross, your hand was raised.
You're muted.
Council Gross, you need to unmute yourself.
Madam Clerk, didn't we get a communication from the administration also today?
You're muted.
Madam Clerk, yeah, thank you.
Yes, we did. I apologize for that. It was also to yourselves. And it just said, on different matters, because they will not be attending tonight. The mayor wants to express his support for Council Order Number 2023-035, Public Hearing Number One. It's not a council order, it's the public hearing. The change has been identified as critically important to the public safety and the flow of traffic as we open the new school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, councilors? Council Worthley and then Council O'Hara.
Thank you. My question is for Superintendent Lummis, if he's available to answer a question. I appreciate it. Am I allowed to ask him a question through this process? Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. Hi, Ben. So, a few months ago, I've lost track of time, maybe six months ago, I'd introduced a council order to ask the Traffic Commission to work with the school department to see if there are other changes to implement, and they decided not to yet. Would there be value, it relates to this, but would there be value to the school department to have almost an open referral to the Traffic Commission and Ordnance Administration Committee to do a review so that once school opens, and, you know, no matter how much we plan, you'll know after the first few days what it really is going to look like. If there's a need for a change, that we can be a little more expeditious and not go through, you know, a two-week or four-week process of notification, things like that. That's just a general question, if you foresee that there may be other changes necessary.
Thank you for the question, Council Worthley. I think, as discussed on ONA last night, Mr. O'Hara was very helpful in saying this out loud. You know, they're likely to be a number of, they're likely, we're likely to learn a few, a number of things once the school opens. That's how the building works, you know, but also how arrival dismissal work. And so, you know, but I would, it's going to take a longer timeframe than just the first week or first couple of weeks, and the reason for that is that almost all the time in the opening of school, folks, families, you know, drive more than they will, you know, than they start taking the bus, and so we need that time to sort out. And so I think, and we will be looking at adjustments if necessary, and we'll have that as a process. And I don't know enough about the City Council process and the ordinance process to know whether some special dispensation would be helpful in that. But I do want to assure folks that, you know, the school department will be looking at and assessing how the process is going. I do want to be clear on this ordinance change, that we're not, that no one's suggesting that Webster Street should be one-way. You would have both ways still, 24/7. It's just at the very end of Webster Street, or, you know, where it enters, if you're coming down the hill, entering onto Eastern Avenue, that you have essentially three lanes there, one going up the hill, and one turning right, one turning left, going down the hill. So, we're not changing any streets in their direction. But, you know, that's the sort of thing that, you know, so anyway, but we will review and assess the arrival dismissal process. We'll be reviewing and assessing a lot of processes with the school. But I don't think I can really weigh in on the City Council ordinance change process. I just don't know enough about it.
Fair enough. A second question. Does this proposed change, change any of the parking that exists on Webster Street? I know it's a wide street, so I didn't want to get a contact.
No, I believe that the parking was amended last summer with the ordinance change. So, the last part, the part on, if you're going down on the right-hand side, all well, already will be prohibited parking. I'm sure that's just during school hours or not, but that's already been, that was one of the recommendations that have been in place since, like I said, 2020, and that's already been acted upon.
Thank you.
Any other questions, councilors? Council O'Hara?
Thank you. I would assume this is for Mr. Lummis. I just, if he could explain the width of these, of these turn lanes in reference to, for instance, a bus traveling from the lights at 128, coming from Eastern Ave, Rockport Side, heading to the school, as it approaches Webster Street to take a right. The average length, full-size bus, how will that bus make that corner without, or again, asking him the width, I just foresee the bus potentially going into those travel lanes. If he could explain the width of these, the left-right turn lanes heading down Webster, and then the lane traveling up Webster towards the new school. Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Council O'Hara, I'm sorry. I do not know enough about streets and signage to comment on the width of lanes and what they should be or what they will be. I just don't know that information, honestly, nor do I understand the physics behind school buses and how anybody drives them or how they make turns. So, it's just something I'm not, I don't have enough knowledge about to comment on intelligently. You know, I do know that all across the city, and our city and others, school buses every day go through very, you know, tight corners and tight streets. You know, they'll also be traveling throughout downtown like they always have, and also, you know, small lanes throughout the city. So, you know, it's in a city like this, things, turns are always tight. I have a lot of confidence in our bus drivers, as I'm sure everyone does, in doing it safely and doing it appropriately. But I'm sorry, I just don't have enough knowledge about turn radiuses and street widths and lane widths. turn radiuses and, and, and street widths and, and, and lane widths.
Thank you.
Any further questions, councilors? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report. Council Nolan.
On a motion by Council Harris, seconded by Counselor Majota, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call. Three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend the city council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article 6, Traffic Schedules, Section 22 dash 265, Turning Movements Generally by Adding the Following. Webster Street at its intersection with Eastern Avenue, traffic shall use the dedicated turn lanes. And I so move.
Second.
Second. Motion's made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara. Is there a narrative, Councilor Nolan?
Um, basically, we're, we're trying to take this section to the bottom of Webster Avenue on to Eastern Avenue to relieve the uh, outgoing traffic from the new school. Um, it's part of the motions of building the school. Um, I believe it may be the final point of making sure that we've given our best chance of having traffic moving forward and instead of being a detriment to the neighborhoods. So basically, that's about what it comes down to.
Thank you. Any further discussion, councilors, on the motion? Council O'Neill.
Yes, hi. This is my ward. Uh, it's not only my ward, it's my neighborhood. I live, uh, my street intersects with Webster Street. I travel that road multiple times a day. So having said that, um, the intersection of Webster and Eastern Ave is at best congested, okay, on, on a good day. It's busy, it's congested, there's accidents at the traffic lights, we all know that. Um, we need to hear, I would like to hear from Niche Engineering, is it, who did the traffic study? I understand they did a video or an animation back on, in March of 2020 and presented that to the school building committee. I would like to see that because I am with um, Traffic Commissioner Ryan in that that buses turning onto Webster, buses turning off of Webster, taking a left on Eastern Ave are going to block the sightline for the cars turning right on Eastern Ave. And the cars that turn right on Eastern Ave are going to hang a left at the bottom of Eastern Ave to go on to East Main Street. So I think it's very dangerous to have those buses taking a left while a car is trying to take a right. You can't see past the bus. So to have three lanes doesn't make sense to me. So I would like to have Niche Engineering, if that's their name, it's Niche, right? Come and s- have a presentation before the full city council. We deserve that as much as the school building committee deserves it. And um, we're talking about children's lives and people's lives. This is um, this is a serious situation. So that's where I stand. I, I, I'm requesting that the city council order Niche Engineering to come before the council and present their animation of how this traffic is supposed to flow so that I can understand it and so the people of my neighborhood can understand it.
Any further comments, councilors?
Oh, yes.
Um, anyone else that has not spoken yet? Um, so I would like, um, Council Worthy, you haven't spoken.
For to you, Counselor Gilman.
So, so my, so my comment was going to be, um, the emphasis in what was discussed last night is the importance of utilizing school buses. And I was at the meeting, wasn't just in front of the school building committee. It was a public meeting, it was at Veterans, it was well attended. I know Denise Pascoochi was there, I remember talking to her that day. Jamie O'Hara was there. I was there. We saw the entire um, animation. I'm trying to think who else was there on the city council. And um, it was, it was um, very detailed and very helpful. And the, um, the engineering report has also been available to all members of the council. Um, and um, and we certainly can resend that to the council. So um, at this point, I think that we are ready to um, to move forward with this.
No, point of order, point of order. We're not ready to move forward.
This is my opportunity to speak right now.
I called the point of order, so I should have the floor.
Oh, okay. Um, state your point of order on me.
Thank you. Um, you're saying that we are ready to move forward. I don't think we're ready to move forward, so I'm invoking a 211C.
Okay, everyone, um, Counselor O'Neill has a right to invoke the 211C. So we will have to reconvene in, at our next meeting, which is on August. Um, Joanne, what is the date? It's the first um, Tuesday in August. Joanne, you are muted.
We have another meeting in July. This is only July 11th.
Okay. So we will, we will convene and we'll, we will continue this at that, um, at that meeting.
July 20th.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you Superintendent and um, School Committee Chair, um, Kathy Clancy.
Um, sorry, uh, Madam President, is it okay if I ask a question, uh, just in terms of process from the city council?
Sure, you, you have the floor, go ahead.
So um, I'm not familiar with 211C is, um, but obviously um, it'd be helpful to know, um, and working with the DPW, uh, when and if this would go forward or what the steps are now.
Madam President, on your order.
Okay, go ahead, Council Nolan, you have the floor.
Um, there is no more discussion on this matter after 211C was called. Whether we feel so or not, um, we can talk to Ben Lummis and people after the meeting and explain to them. But procedurally, once a 211C is called, the actual floor stops. Um,
Council Nolan, that's right. So, um, so thank you.
Appreciate that, sorry.
Council Worthy, that the conversation is over. I think Council Nolan was very articulate. So, um, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Is the second public hearing, uh, public hearing 2023 dash 036. The man lost a court of warrants, is chapter 22, traffic and motor vehicles, Article 6, traffic schedules, section 22 dash 270. Parking prohibited at all times is section 22 dash 291, to away zones by adding Washington Street, westernly side from its intersection with Centennial Avenue in a northerly direction for a distance of 110 feet.
Okay, I would like to open the public hearing and um,
Madam Chair.
Council Worthy.
Thank you. Um, I would like to make a motion to continue to a specific date and then I'll explain why afterwards. Uh, and that date I'm looking for would be, I would say late September or early October. I know there's a preliminary election in that timeframe, so I don't want to burden the clerk's office, but maybe would the 3rd of October be a date that we could have for a public hearing? And that's a question partly to you and to um, City Clerk Joanne Cinos.
Um, Madam Clerk, you are muted.
I'm just looking at the calendar. Um, September. So you want it either, it would be, uh, it's the October 10th or October 24th.
And what is the, is the 19th the preliminary election or is the 26th and how does that impact?
Okay, so September 19th is the preliminary election if needed. Okay, so um, we would wrap up that election on September 22nd. But then after, we would start with the um, vote by mail and um, all the necessary preparations for the November 7th.
What are the council dates in September? Is it the 12th and the 26th of your council meetings?
Yes, the 12th and the 26th, yes.
So could we move it to September 26th?
So why don't you, um, make a motion for your five orders that you would like to um, to continue to a date specific?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to continue each of the five uh, council orders until September 26th, 2023. And I so move.
Um, since made by Council Worthy, seconded by Council Memard, um, I'm, I'm going to refer to our city clerk, Joanne.
So um, Council Worthy, refer them as council orders. They're public hearings, so if you want to continue the public hearings.
That's what I meant.
On the agenda, uh, public hearings number two through six to September 12th, I think it would clarify uh, for the public that they're public hearings and not council orders.
Yes, that's what I meant to do. So if we could.
Go ahead. Why don't you amend, why don't you, um, why don't you amend it and just say it correctly? Go ahead, Council Worthy.
My mistake. Um, I'd like to uh, move to continue the, the public hearings scheduled for tonight regarding the Centennial Ave and Washington Street intersections until September 26th. And I so move.
Second.
Um, Madam Clerk, just a point of order from my perspective. Um, I haven't opened any of the public hearings except for the first. So do I need to go back, um, depending on this vote to, um, to open up each one and continue it and vote it? Okay, okay. So, um, so right now I think we're discussing, um, the totality of Council Worthy's um, motion to continue these five public hearings to a date specific, which is September 26th, correct? Okay, um, so um, on the motion, um, Council Grow, your hand up. Council Worthy, your hand, you, you made the motion, so you have the floor.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So um, this was submitted to the mayor's office and to the, to the traffic commission, I think in October of last year. And so we've learned some information from the administration today, that there's some statistics that they, that, that showed some inter, some accidents. I think we should look at that. Um, there was a suggestion that this be part of the comprehensive planning initiative, but um, and, and that certainly is welcomed, but also that could take a year and a half to two years as the last one did. And so I think that there's some changes that have been proposed. Um, some of the five I think are easy to look at and some of them may be a little more complicated. Um, I think that this would give us enough time to review those. If there's any input from the administration, I'd love to, I welcome that. And thirdly, I'd like to schedule a formal site visit so we can not deliberate there, but all see how these um, recommendations, again, these are recommendations from the traffic commission to us, uh, to see how those would play out. That's why I'm seeking the continuation.
Okay, um, Council Grow.
Um, shouldn't we have gotten this stuff done before we advertised and put forward a public, public hearing? Because basically, if we're going to continue public hearings that are going to represent totally changed ordinance changes, we're, we're going to be, we're going to be left trying to do the, 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 the changes at the public hearing in two months from now. Is that, I mean, it we're, I think Council Worthy is asking more appropriately would be to refer all this back to ONA for further considerations, so that we can plan a site visit, so we can introduce new uh, uh, information that might be, I mean, because at this point, we're not at the, adding new information point or reconsidering a, a site visit or anything like that. We're at the public hearing point. So it, it seems to me it would make more sense if he asked to withdraw these at, in, in their entirety and resubmit to ONA for a more detailed discussion and involvement of the administration in terms of the uh, their concerns. I mean, I'm just, I'm just asked throwing that out there.
I'd be happy to answer that if, if I may.
Go ahead, Council Worthy.
Thank you. So this was actually a recommendation, a request the mayor, uh, that Frank, uh, Council Majota made, as well as a council order that I, that I had submitted. And the administration sent it to the traffic commission and then the traffic commission came back to ONA and ONA brought it to us. Um, and then we heard from the administration today that there were some concerns, which are fair, and I appreciate that they, they wanted to hear, be heard before we voted on this. Um, but I want to take those into consideration. I don't want to withdraw and then start the process completely over if Council Nolan and the ordinance administration committee would be willing to take it back so we could do a site visit. I'd be happy to send it there, but where they referred it out already, I don't want to assume that they'd want to take it back. So um, Council Grow, you are correct. It makes sense to have site visit and some of these things organized before it got to this point. And um, I appreciate that ONA wanted to move it forward. Um, and the traffic commission did, these again, came from the traffic commission, so we didn't need to send it to them again. But these are their recommendations and I think we should have a proper hearing on and do the research necessary.
I'm going to um, ask Council Nolan to speak because he chairs ONA and um, I think everyone has read the minutes very thoroughly from that meeting that um, occurred on, on this vote. So um, Council Nolan, you have the floor.
Um, whichever way the council decides, I don't see a problem with it. I just know that these uh, five orders in front of us aren't ready for prime time. Um, there's been some other information that's been brought up through the administration. Um, past communications, past uh, surveys and so on and so forth. Um, if it's easier for the council to go back to ONA um, with the administration involved in this, um, that's not a problem for me. I have no problem taking that up. Um, if they want to, if the will of the council is to bring it back to a public hearing after a site visit, which is kind of weird for our councils to ask for a site visit out of a committee, but that can happen too. Uh, but I have no problem um, with it going back. The only thing I would ask is that we have some time on this because there's a lot of information that we'd like to get from the administration um, before us at ONA to present to the council. So this is going to come back to ONA. This is definitely going to be something in the same timeframe that Council Worth was looking for, for us to achieve the uh, greatest goal.
Thank you, Council Nolan.
Um, Council Worthy, do you want to redo your, your, um, your motion and withdraw without prejudice, your first one?
I'd like to withdraw without prejudice my first motion and then I'd like to make a motion that we refer, and we may need to do it five times, refer each of these five um, public hearings, starting with number 2023, um, I'm sorry, it's on the second page. 2023, number 35, number 36, 37, 38, and 39 and 40 back to the ordinance, ordinance administration committee with a goal of having a site visit at some point. And I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Worthy, seconded by Council Memard. Um, on the motion, Council Worthy and then Council Gross will be first to speak after that.
Oh, so it, much like the, the first motion I made, and I thank Counselor Grow for his insight on that. Um, this was at one point, and I'm not sure where it stands today, but listed in one of the top five intersections with um, accidents. And um, I think the changes that were proposed, parts of them are probably very easy for this council to see and understand and, and, and vote on and maybe approve. And there's other parts that are a little more complicated. And there's parts that I'm not 100% behind completely either. So given that, um, and I should have asked, and I apologize, I should have asked ordinance administration committee to conduct a site visit if they were inclined. Um, I, I failed to ask them that. They didn't have one, which I respect. But I think it makes sense to try to do that. Um, and it probably makes sense to look at summer traffic and then probably look at school traffic again in, in September. So um, that's why I like to continue it and not necessarily start over, but you know, kind of keep the, the, the car on the train a little bit longer. Thank you.
Um, someone had their hand up before. Um, Council Gross on the motion.
Um, I think Counselor Worthy, I think you said um, 035. I don't think that you wanted to have that one included.
You are correct. 36, 37, 38, 39, and 40. Thank God for Counselor Gross.
Thank you.
Is anything. I mean that as a compliment, Tony.
Okay, so I think we're clear and the motion is uh, made um, by Council Worthy that we're going to return um, those five um, council orders to ONA. And we, we did not state a date to be specific to continue the public hearing until September twenty-sixth. So I guess I would suggest that we amend Counsel Worthley's order or request to return for a date specific to come back to the full committee on September twenty-sixth, and I so move.
Second.
So on my amendment, it's just to be specific that, that the date that we discussed would be the date to, to continue the public hearing. And then what we would have to do tonight is just open each of the five public hearings and continue them to September twenty-sixth.
Got it.
So on the, on the motion to amend, Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Yes, as have it. On the amendment to the main motion, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now back to the main motion. Any, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman. Yes, Counsel Gross.
Yes.
I'm not as smart as Counsel Gross. Anyway, the yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. So at this point, Madam Clerk, can we just batch these five together and open them officially all and just wrap it up in one? Or are you going to make it five times?
Yeah, you just have to make sure that, you know, you reference each public hearing, what it is, the number. And that we would like to open them, you know, each one.
Okay.
Open them, you know, each one, like you group them, and then continue to September twenty-sixth. You can do that.
Okay, so I would like to open up the public hearings for public hearing two thousand twenty-three oh three six, public hearing two thousand and twenty-three oh three seven, public hearing two thousand and twenty-three oh three eight, public hearing two thousand twenty-three oh three nine, public hearing two thousand and twenty-three oh four oh, and continue all five of those to a date specific, which is September twenty-sixth. And I so move.
Second.
A motion made by Gilman, seconded by Counsel Worthley. Roll call vote, Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes, it is my birthday. Thanks for the five extra, uh, public hearings.
Sorry, my birthday was September twelfth, so we'll, we'll load yours up. Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The council vote memo from City Clerk regarding a city council vote to authorize the purchase of eleven D S two hundred voting machines and associated equipment.
Thank you. And why don't you begin, Madam Clerk, and tell us about this, this vote and why it's important to you in the City Clerk's office?
Well, this vote is required for the Secretary of State's office. Once we change machines and discontinue a machine, the city council has to vote to do that. And also, the funding was approved on, I believe, June twenty-seventh for these machines. And so this vote is required by the Secretary of State's office, and they provided the language for us to do so, so that it's on record with the city council and also at the Secretary of State's office, that they know that we're using different, a different machine, but it's certified by the Secretary of State to be used at, at the elections.
Thank you. So at this point, is there a committee report? Counsel Nolan.
There's no committee report.
Committee report, I'm sorry. So this is just, this is from council. We've already, this is the second time that we're looking at this, so thank you. So I guess I should move it. I will move that the city council authorized a purchase of eleven D S two hundred voting machines and associated equipment to discontinue the use of the AccuVote tabulators and begin using the D S two hundred tabulators in all precincts and in all elections, beginning with the September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three preliminary municipal election in accordance with M G L Chapter fifty-four, Section thirty-four, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Gilman, seconded by Worthley. Is there further discussion, any counselors? Counsel Nolan, and then Counsel O'Neil.
I'm, I'm kind of excited about this. I mean, voting is very important and to update our equipment. But if, if we're going with a D S two hundred, i- it, was there any option for like an R two D two or a bot that would actually come to us and help us to give us a, take our, our voting records? Or is it still a standard table that we're going to put it in?
No, there are no other options. There are only two machines that the state certifies that we're allowed to use. And after the demonstration of two machines, we decided as the City Clerk's office, who was ever involved in the election, that this would be the best choice for the city to use the D S two hundreds. Every city in town uses either one of these, the AccuVotes, the D S two hundreds, or the image casts, which is the other one that is certified, and, or some do still paper hand ballots. So there are no, those were the only options.
Excellent. Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you, Counsel O'Neil. Your hand was raised.
Thank you. I'm just wondering what happens to the old AccuVote tabulators?
The company that we're dealing with has given us a trade-in value. Okay, so they do, they're, they're taking all the machines back, the AccuVotes, plus the ballot boxes. So they're taking them back, and I don't know what they do with them at that time, whether they just resurface, you know, to other states or use them as parts for the people who are using AccuVotes. But they are, they are taking them back with, with that contract that was the trade-in.
All right, that's terrific. Thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Is there a motion to reconsider?
So moved, as there's some moved. Second.
Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Grow. Roll call vote, Counsel Grow.
No.
Counsel Majota.
No.
Counsel Memard.
No.
Counsel Nolan.
No.
Counsel O'Hara.
No.
Counsel O'Neil.
No.
Counsel Worthley.
No.
Counsel Gilman, no. Counsel Gross.
No.
The motion fails zero in favor, nine opposed. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, counselors. It's Counsel Grow's city council statement regarding the Gloucester four hundred celebration.
Right, I'll read that, and then I have something I'd like to ask the council. So let's go ahead and do that first. Uh, this city council statement regarding the four hundred. Sorry, I had it in front of me. Two thousand twenty-three marks four hundred years since the English Dorchester Company landed on our shores. Gloucester sits on the ancestral homeland of the Pawtucket people and their neighbors, the Massachusetts, Nipmuck, and Pennacook and Wampanoag tribes. Please enjoy the year-long and multiple events throughout two thousand twenty-three, most of which will be free or low cost. Visit Gloucester MA four hundred dot org for a list of upcoming events. Like and share the Gloucester four hundred Facebook page. And to receive major event notifications by email, send a request to info at Gloucester MA four hundred dot org. And then I would request Counsel Gilman, under Section two five of the Charter, special meetings, that you call a special meeting on July eighteenth for the purpose of a one-item agenda dealing with the Webster Street issue. This is time sensitive, and you can call a special meeting, and we can have that discussion at that meeting, and that will save a week of delay on what is going to be a time issue towards the end of this, uh, end of the summer here and getting ready. So I would ask you, as council president, to call that meeting tonight.
Second.
Madam Clerk, are there any issues with, with that occurring? Because I don't see that as a problem. I think that as long as we have a quorum that attends that meeting, that that I can arrange for that.
I'm just looking at the calendar to see if there's any. I don't believe there's any conflicting meetings. There are not, so.
Okay, so be on the eighteenth. The eighteenth is.
Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Okay. So I'd be willing to do that, but in respect to Counsel O'Neil, she has her hand raised. Go ahead, Tracy.
Thank you. Is that enough time to talk to niche engineering and get that? Get them here to present to us?
We can, we can, we can send you the, the, the engineering survey that was done.
Okay, I understand that, but in fairness to the people of the neighborhood, they should be able to see the animation and ask questions of these niche en- engineering, or at least participate and see what what's supposed to happen there and how it's supposed to work. I, I don't, I, is that enough time to, to get that all together, one week? How do, how do we go about that? How does that happen?
I don't think that that's a problem. I think it's pretty simple because the animation is there and the, the, the detail of the report is available, so we can send that out as a packet, and, and then we can show that at the meeting.
Okay, you have the animation?
Oh, I'm sure. I mean, I don't know why that, why that would have gone away.
Point of order.
Go ahead. I've got a call on Counsel Grow because he's calling a point of order. Go ahead, Counsel Grow.
With respect to Counsel O'Neil, we are at the point in the meeting of the public hearing that we are about to vote. There is no no, there's no place in the public hearing for the introduction of new material or repeat of new material or questions from the, the, the community. At this point, if we come back on the twenty-fifth with a, a, returning to this thing, we're going to basically return to council discussion and a vote. So I'm not sure where we are going to put a new presentation by the Traffic Commission or Traffic Study. We're, we're at the point of voting for it. She may have pulled a two eleven C, but that doesn't automatically grant her the right to upend the public hearing process.
If you're going to have a special meeting on the eighteenth, that would be a place to have it. Right? To show it so that people, it doesn't have to be a public hearing. It could be a city council meeting and where people know that they get to see the animation and what's going to happen, or what should happen, or is supposed to happen, and how it's supposed to work. If we're going to have a special meeting, then that would be the time to have it, correct? I mean, if you're going to have a special meeting.
So, so to, to Counsel Gross.
Point of order.
Go ahead, Counsel Nolan.
We're still talking about something that was sanctioned on two eleven C. We asked to have a meeting to review it. We should not be going over the floor points of what's at the meeting or what a counselor expects to see at the meeting at that point. Counsel Grow is one hundred percent correct. Presentations are, are done when this is called. It's, it's beyond, it's, it's up to counselors to make their, their choice and how they vote. And that's where it stands. So I, I think at this point, scheduling for a special meeting is at the, the request of yourself as a council president, to have this on the eighteenth, which you are totally entitled to. But for us to continue talking about the floor points of it tonight would be grounds against two eleven C.
And, and I agree with Counsel Nolan. So, so the, the, so, so the meeting will be on the, the, the eighteenth at six o'clock, and it will be Zoom. And, and we will resume the public hearing right where it left off. Thank you. Any others? Okay, we've got hands. So this is on the two eleven C right now because we're not having a discussion about anything else. Counsel Worthley, you haven't spoken on this. Go ahead.
Right, I just want to say you've got it exactly right. I just want to make it clear to the public that there are no oral communications at the special council meeting as a one-item agenda, so there wouldn't be other things that we'd be entertaining, and there wouldn't be anything else other than what's posted regarding this one item. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. Counsel O'Neil.
Yeah, excuse me when you said we'll continue the public hearing on this.
On the eighteenth.
Right, so that's a good, it will be a public hearing.
No, the, the public hearing was at the end of it, and when we do a two eleven C, we, we, we reconvene at the purpose of the discussion. That's basically what a two eleven C is. Joanne, tell me if I've misquoted that because this is important.
You said that we would continue the public hearing.
Okay, then I wa- then I was confused. I, I mean, I was confusing with what I said, but, but it, but it continues where we left off, which was after the public hearing.
Okay.
And it was, it was requested that we do a two eleven C at that point. Counsel Gross.
As I'm reading the charter, the two eleven C is strictly about taking the vote. Was, it was postponement of a vote. All discussion is ceased at the two eleven C calling. Whether that was premature or not, after that is just about the vote. That's all that's taken up after that. And it can be taken up at a special meeting also.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we, we need to move on, counselors, because I think we, we've been very clear on this. I, I can't think of anything clearer than what Counsel Gross has just said and what Counsel Nolan have said, so, and Counsel Worthley. So, so next order of business, Madam Clerk.
It's the council's request to the mayor.
And we will go by roll call order. We'll start with Counsel Grow.
Uh, two things, very quickly, actually not request the mayor, but just sort of points of information to the council. Last meeting, I, I had mentioned the Citizens for Juvenile Reform, Judicial Reform had sent along a presentation. I invite you to review that presentation. I don't think we're going to have a presentation at the council level. But they have also, in that package that I sent you, provided letters that you can write and support if you so feel, so I would encourage you to review the information. If you want to reach out to them individually, please do, but there is a, a means by which you can register your support of their, of their initiatives. And I would ask that you consider doing that in light of not having a full city council review of the issue. And if you need to get the presentation, I can send it to you again through Messina's. And then secondly, another thing I sent out to everybody was that we are going to be having poll petitions reviewed at the next P and D meeting. If you have specific issues in your wards that you would like me to bring up at poll petition discussion, please send them through to Joanne or Grace, and she will forward them to me. We're just going to make a, a general request that we, we find a way to, to facilitate the, the fixing of these things. They do do a good job when they're, when they're motivated to do it, so hopefully we can get them to be motivated, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Majota.
Yes, I have one request, and it's more for information that I got from a few residents on Western Ave. Is how will the barrier around G S, G H S affect the Western Ave residents? Has the city thought of, or has any plans to help the residents impacted by the barriers? Are there any plans in conjunction with the state to control the water flow over the causeway? That is my request, to get more information of what the G H S barrier is, how it affects Western Avenue. Thank you. Um, that is my request to get more information of what the G H S barriers, how it affects Western Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Memard.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to meet with the mayor this afternoon and review my specific requests. I would, however, like to thank Council Gilman and Council Gross for joining me at the Gloucester Rotarian celebration and groundbreaking for the playground improvements at the Stageport Park. The mayor and Margaret Bruce were all there, and there was Frank arranged for some gold, gold-plated shovels that he sent Julie over with. And we did a good job of digging in the dirt and the wood chips, and we can look forward to a beautiful new element of the playground there, courtesy of both our Gloucester Rotary and the Gloucester Community Preservation Act support.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Nolan.
I know questions for the administration. I would like to point out and thank Ringo Tarr, Barry Pett in the committee, Emily Oliver, for their hard work and dedication to the city to provide us with a concert on the boulevard. The fireworks, well-intentioned, would have been beautiful. It's out of their control. This committee works very hard. They do a lot of fundraising and a lot of work, and they did an excellent job with most of what their ambition was. The rest was Mother Nature. We can't control fog. Four hundredth did a great job. I love our city. I love all our volunteers. Ringo Tarr and crew, you'll never hear a complaint out of me, and I think that all of us owe them a round of applause.
Thank you, Counselor. Council O'Hara.
I'm I'm all set. Thank you.
Council O'Neil.
I don't have any requests to the mayor, but I I I do need to say some things that my ward has been greatly affected by many things, and no one seems to really give a damn what's happening in my ward, and it's very upsetting. It's very upsetting. You know, I was at the ordinances administration meeting last night. I was not recognized. I was not able to speak, which
Counselor, I was there too, and I wasn't recognized, so.
Counsel Nolan said there won't be, it wouldn't be any questions, and that's fine. It's just my neighborhood, my ward has taken a beating over the past few decades. And I really think it's a sad thing when the City Council will not show the citizens of the city what's going to happen at that intersection. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Counselor Worthley.
Yes, I'd like to echo Council Nolan's comments about the fireworks committee and also with the Horribles Parade. Fishtown Horribles Parade, I think, was one of the best in my history of being part of it, and I think I heard that from everybody I talked to, that they really enjoyed that quite a bit. So I also want to commend them. There's a question. I saw a notification about paving on Perkins Street and Green Street, and I wondered just for information if we could find out if that's tied in somehow. If you recall, the mayor had announced that he was going to tie in the Green Street Playground Softball Field to the sewer line going down Green Street, and there's a question about whether that would be done before the sewers put in or have done at the same time. So just an update on that. And then, I have some notes here, hang on. That's my notes. I got it. Okay, so this is the last one. The mayor had asked me last year to see if I could work on helping to remove or find a way to have carriages that are strewn about downtown not to be. And I contacted Shaw's, and they told me what a program they were going to do. I researched some alternatives. But they have started a program which stops carriages from leaving their property. And I think it sounds good, like in theory, but the reality is the people who are pushing carriages outside of Shaw's property don't have alternatives. They don't have a car. They don't have help. They they're using paper bags. They can't carry as many. The seniors and the go-bus used to allow for more, but the bus that the city provides now only allows for two two bags for people who are getting groceries at the downtown Shaw's. I'm sorry, this is only for the downtown Shaw's. I forgive me. And I've connected with a number of service providers. You'll hear more about it soon, but I'd like to engage the mayor's office in this to see if there's some alternative to help the people who need the most help getting food to their homes who can't do it otherwise. And my heart breaks for the idea that you're you're pushing a carriage full of groceries, and now the carriage is on a center, the wheels lock. And you have no way of getting your your bags of groceries home. So this also includes the the senior housing complexes. So it's just something, you'll hear more about it in the coming days, next week or so. But I just reach out to you all to be thinking of solutions to be helpful. That's it for me for today.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Gross.
Um, yeah, I'd just like to recognize Officer Pizza Terra, who was given the two thousand twenty-three Fred Floyd-led Better National Resource School Resource Officer Award last week or two weeks ago. I don't think anybody's spoken about that yet. You know, he brought in the Comfort Dog Ace. He started the Youth Angler Program, which has been highly successful with the kids. And and he's been an outstanding school resource officer, so it's great that, and Gloucester should be very proud that that we have one of the best in the nation for us. Also, on last Saturday, I had the the pleasure of accompanying on the Harbor Master Pace Boat, the Dory Races, where our neighbors to the north gave us a little lesson in rowing, but but we did win a couple of meets, but we we didn't fare too well in in most, but it was a, it was a fun time had by all on a beautiful, perfect day. Flat, calm, little overcast, so it wasn't too hot, and it was absolutely fantastic. And it brought me back to my youth, actually. My father was the chairman of the Dory Race Committee back in the sixties and the heyday, so I remember going down to the Canadian boats for breakfast, and it was quite a trip down memory lane, but it was really a spectacular part of Gloucester's history.
Great. Um, and I have nothing to say, but thank you for the Clerk's office for all your hard work. I'm continued to be amazed with the productivity and the dedication of the entire Clerk's office. So thank you, Joanne and your team. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, my gosh, I'll take, I'll take about three or four seconds on that, and I'm roll call vote, Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Um, I'm going to say yes, and I do care for all the wards in Gloucester. That's it. Thank you.
Council Memard.
Same. Thank you.
Council Nolan.
Yes, and I do care for all the wards in Gloucester.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes, thank you.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes, and good night.
Good night, everybody.
Night.